I'm going to call the meeting to order. I am going to do one, I know it's agenda review. After we finish the interviews, we're going to vote to, I'm going to ask for a vote to go into non-public so we can discuss the two candidates independently and then come back and take a vote on the appointment at that point. The person that we do appoint tonight is certainly welcome to stay for the training session if they'd like to stay for the training session. We have Barrett Christina from the New Hampshire School Association coming to do some school board training after this meeting, after the interviews. If you can't, that's perfectly fine as well. And the appointment, what we'd like to do is have the official swearing in of the new board member next Monday night, which is our next school board meeting. So that's what the schedule is going to be. So I'd like to add to the agenda after item number four, which is the at-large member interviews, the motion to go into non-public if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Sure.
Okay. This is the time for public input. I don't see anybody from the public other than the two candidates. So I think we'll move right on from public input to the interview process. And we received Tom's letter of interest first, so we'll ask Tom to go first and then we'll ask him to go second. So I'm going to open the conversation, I guess, and then the rest of the board can ask questions as we move forward. Tom, what is your, what's your driving force to want to be on the school board?
Well, I think that public education is under attack right now.
Hang on, let me have one, I'm going to talk into one of those microphones. They are just so, because we are, this is being recorded, so I want to make sure that with the red light on, it is on, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, let me start. I have several generations that have attended Governor West Regional School. My sister graduated sixteen, I graduated eighty-one. My wife graduated ninety. My oldest daughter, twenty-twelve. And my youngest daughter will graduate next year. And as a parent, I think I have an interest in being able to bring that insight of having a child actually in the school. I also have an interest in education period from the time I graduated from high school, where I did not take much, I didn't place as much value as I should have in education. But immediately after that, graduated college, I started a training and education program over on the west side of the lake in what we call Lake's Regional Mutual Fire Aid Association for training firefighters, because I understood the necessity of people having to have basic education. And we sought to make it as easy as possible for fire chiefs to send their firefighters to it. And we went from having zero departments requiring firefighter on to every firefighter after we were done, dead. And it was, it's still going on and at that time was considered by the state Training and Education Commission to be a model for the state. I also, as an attorney, I was a board of, a member and then a member of the Board of Directors and eventually the president of the National Academy of Elder Law Attorneys. And that focus was on educating attorneys on elder law, different aspects of law that affect the elderly, which is very broad, expansive. And also seeing the, I'll say it all the way, the attack on school boards, which I consider an attack on our, our school system and ultimately our democratic institutions. I felt this was a good time to step up and help out where I can. That's all.
Thank you. Other board members that has any question for Tom?
Can we kind of hear both of their answers and then ask?
Well, we could, I guess we could do that. If that, if the board is okay with that, we'll go back and forth for either one.
Is that all right?
Okay. All right, let's, all right, we'll do that. Just slide the microphone over there. I guess the same, same question. What's, what's your driving force to want to be on school board?
So, I'm passionate about education. I have taught physics and astronomy for thirty years. Oh my God, I don't understand how that's possible, but I was looking at the numbers and they don't lie. So I have taught for thirty years. I've been very passionate about education and I spent the last twenty years teaching at Brewster. My three kids have gone to Governor Whitworth and they've had good, solid educations. And in particular, my child Maya, who had a whole host of special needs. You guys will always have my gratitude for that. So, like Tom, I have seen some of the mean spirited attacks. I mean, I don't know if there's a nicer, more politic way of saying it. And I just, I have a thick skin. I feel I could make a contribution. I am a public school kid. I was not, not Governor Whitworth, I must admit, Brooklyn. But I haven't taught in public schools and I feel like this is a way I can give back. Because I got a great education and my kids got a great education. So, yes, that's, I guess that is my motivation.
Thank you. Okay, now we can open it up if, for each one of them, Brody. And again, try to, since we're doing it back and forth.
Yeah, the question will be applicable to both. I just, I want to ask both of you, what do you think the top priority of this school district should be going forward?
Top three.
That's a top.
I think the top priority is giving the biggest bang to the block, to the taxpayers and to the students. We have to counter our desire to give the best education, which I certainly want to do, with the fact that we have many people in the school district who are on fixed incomes and we have to keep that in mind. I think that's, I think that encompasses a lot of things as far as getting the best bang for the buck.
Maybe it's because I've been at Brewster for so long, but I'm a student-centered person. I want to make sure that the students here are well-educated and safe and in a reasonable way, right? Like, I understand it's a public school, but I think that the student has to be at the heart of the school, right? The student is what drives my decisions. Everybody benefits when we have good, solid public education. Everybody. So, yeah, I guess what drives, yeah, what would drive my decision is what's best for the student and the kid and the teacher.
Charlene?
This question is more specifically for you, Emily. I was wondering if you could help us understand what informed your decision to spend your career exclusively teaching at private schools?
So it was a hard decision for me. I was in New York at the time and I called the New York City Board of Ed and I said, okay, what do I have to do? I'd been teaching, I don't know, what, three years at that point. I said, so, okay, so what do I have to do to get certified? And I literally got passed over to seventeen different people before I quit asking the question. Like, the bureaucracy in New York, I was like, doesn't everybody ask, this is not an out-of-the-box question, like, what do I have to do? This was before internet where you could book it up and stuff and I just needed to ask. So that was part of it, that I, I'm not certified to teach. I have never been certified. I'm quite qualified. I've been teaching for a long time and I do know my subject, but the bureaucracy scared me. I like the control that I have in my classroom and I've never had a hard time finding a job. I like the smaller class size. So those were the things that kind of influenced me to stay in private school versus go to the public school.
Brody?
Son, oh, there we go. I just have a question for both of you again. What do you think we could improve upon as an entire school district? Like, what should we be doing as next steps to make this school district the best it can be?
Specifically, as far as classes and so forth, I don't, I don't know. But as far as dealing with the current hostilities that you've been encountering, I would suggest continuing down the line of open transparency with parents and staff so that there isn't this vacuum of information that the people far beyond the people that come to our meetings are taking advantage of and telling that this is happening, our child is being indoctrinated or whatever. I think increasing transparency so that parents can see, oh, that's what's being done. Okay, no problem. That's my, one of my thoughts.
Somewhat hard to say because I haven't sat on the school board and been involved in the intimate decisions that have been made, admittedly. I also think part of getting beyond hostilities is inviting people in, not people who are just trying to prove a point and don't actually want anything to really change. Being more open to things like hearing from special needs parents or hearing from parents more where maybe even in smaller groups, getting, I guess it's kind of along with what Tom is saying, is increasing the transparency by inviting reasonable people in.
All right, one more, Brody, you have one.
Just, just one more for both of you. How do you view the role of school board members or the board itself within the S A U? Like, what is the board's role within Governor Whitworth Regional School District?
I believe the board's role is to set policy. Then you have the superintendent who administers the day-to-day and you have the principals of each school who administer day-to-day at that point policies to set by the board and also controlling the finances as far as what are we going to appropriate for the next year.
Yeah, I guess I don't have much different to say than that. It is a supervisory role. You're not supposed to be in the classroom or anything, but you help direct and hopefully help people vision the best education that you can within the restrictions of the amount of money you have to spend. So you try to make sure that money is being spent in a way that honors both the kid and the stu, and the teacher and the local tax base.
Thank you for that question, Brody, because I, I've always looked at the school board and the S A U, the whole school district process as a corporation-type atmosphere. The superintendent is the CEO of the corporation. The CEO does run the operation day-to-day. The board is the board of directors. The superintendent answers to the board of directors, but the board does not micromanage. If there's specific things that are brought to the board's attention, the superintendent knows about that and goes through the process of looking how that's handled on a day-to-day basis. And that's, that is critical for any board member to understand that we're not, we're not in the day-to-day operation. Not that the board members can't visit schools, you know, call the principal, they'd like to visit a school and see what's happening within a particular school, it's perfectly fine. But it's not the board's responsibility to dictate what happens in the classroom and all that, that's not our job. So, thank you. Stephanie?
First of all, I want to say it's such a privilege to have two outstanding people step up and want this job. Of course, there's really not much compensation that's going to.
There's compensation.
The knowledge that you have to serve the community is in your heart. You know, you have both spoken about wanting to increase transparency and communication and one of the things I'm wondering is about strengths. What strengths do you see as some of the things that you might talk about in the community? Because we can look at problems, but we also need to recognize and celebrate accomplishments and strengths. And I'm, I'm wondering, what have you seen the district do well or that you can say that you're proud of?
Well, I, I think one is the magnitude or expansive number of classes that are offered, which is one of the reasons that we went with public school. And also with the technical programs at the location technical institute or ex call. I think those are all things that people be proud of. And, you know, the more we can do to improve upon that, the better we are.
So, I like the fact that as a school district, we honor all different kinds of kids. So, the kids who are super smart, smart, who are academically gifted, they have a place here. The kids who are more suited to voc tech, they have a place. My daughter Maya was very challenged academically, but she had a place. She had a place here. And I didn't always have the easiest relationship with my I E P team, but we worked through it and we came up with a fabulous program that honored her individually. I sit, I'm a pick volunteer advocate, which means that I help people around the state who's, who have kids with special needs and I listen to their problems and I help them understand the law, basically. And I have heard such a bewildering variety of horrible situations and I've always appreciated that this school district, it helped me appreciate more that the school district does what is within the law. There are school districts that do not, I guarantee you, because I've heard these horrible stories. And we work to educate every kid. Maya was never going to take advanced placement visits. She just wasn't. But her learning was just as important as those people who had advanced placement visits. She was not lost here. And it is part of this, I, I feel like I would like to give back because this school district gave all my kids, but her in particular, such a great shot.
Thank you for both of you being here this evening. Kind of co-tail and some comments that Jack was making about the board in general, one of the things I learned early on, and not through any negative experience here, I think, was that the board is, is the entity here. Individual board members don't have a lot of power, you know, as individuals, but collectively, you know, we do the job. So I think it's, it's good to know that team players are appreciated, but everybody brings their own diverse experience and opinions and common sense and everything else in the process, so, so hopefully that's, that's something that comes naturally. But I do have a question and, and this is probably a pretty, pretty simple one, is, you know, this particular position is to fill out the rest of the year for, for Mr. Eldridge who stepped down and then there will be an election to, to go on. And Jack, is there?
It's a one, yeah, the.
One year remaining?
It's a one year remaining on Tim, so next March you've got one for one year and then the following March, so twenty-four would be a full term, three years. Twenty-twenty-three would be for one, the one year remaining on his term.
Okay. So, you know, simply my question is, and you may not give a real good answer to, you've actually been on the board for a few months, but do you see anything that would prevent you from wanting to continue on at the end of this particular term? You know, we like to see continuity and people, you know, staying around for a little while anyways. And, you know, I'm going to assume that most of you have looked at the long term, but can you speak to that?
Well, everything you've said, Jim. I, I'm not going to promise to run. I'm going to build this up, experience it and then getting my obligations and so forth. If I do it, I probably would, but I'm not going to say absolutely I will run. Do you think stuff come up?
So I guess I'll speak first to your team player issue. I, I am a team player at Brewster. We're on academic teams and we have to reach consensus, which is not always easy, but is always done, amazingly enough. So I have a lot of experience in being a team player and compromising, finding the best solution to a given problem. Will I run? If I feel like I'm effective, I will run. But I have to make, you know, I don't, I don't know that, so like Tom, I, I sort of hesitate to say absolutely, because I want to make sure I feel like I can make, I mean, difference. And I think I can, but, so I, yeah, I, I'm not trying to be politically cagey. I would be interested in running if I feel like I can make a positive contribution.
We just don't want to go through this again. No, that's, that's certainly understandable and I think, you know, once, once you're on the board, I think if you look, look down at the table, we've had some people on the board for a while and, and in my years on the board, a lot of board members have been on it for years and years and years. And it's, it's not so much looking at your individual, what you think is your individual contribution, but the contribution that the board makes to the educational process for the kids in the district. And again, it's, you know, your, your input as a board member is extremely important, but again, the consensus, and then we speak as one, you know, with one voice at the end of the day, whether you're on a, you know, I always say when you're on a winning side, unless you're ever winning a losing side, necessarily an argument or a discussion, but once a board vote is taken, you speak as, we speak as one unified voice.
Yes, in Brewster, we call that team privacy. But once we decide something as a team, that's the deal.
Yeah. Dana?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the board and, apologize to.
I just turned wide off.
And.
And the candidates. I was sitting over at Crescent Lake for five-twenty hour and at six o'clock I realized the meeting's not here. So then I looked for Brody's state plate to find out where the meeting was.
You took a breath, you're looking crazy.
Now, like Stephanie says, I have read both of your letters of intent and find the same outcome that I'm happy to find two candidates that are well-qualified for the position. So I don't have any direct question for either one right now, but I felt I needed to apologize for my lateness. Okay, thank you.
I have one follow-up question.
Because, would you turn your mic on just to make sure that the cameras are on?
That would be a good one, I'm sure.
Yeah, the radio's on.
No, it is on. Oh, okay, this is.
It's on.
Oh, I can't see where, I forgot it. The, so you've been able to share what you believe your priorities are and what you believe the strengths of the districts are? And I'm wondering, what do you believe are the biggest challenges that you as a board member might have to face and us as a district face?
Ready?
So many challenges. But you know, our number one priority in schools is keeping kids safe. That, that is like the bare minimum, right? And so there are challenges there and those are challenges we must meet, right? There's, there's no gray room there. The world is changing so very fast that as a school district, we need to prepare kids by not teaching them individual facts, but how to learn, right? And so, because they're going to spend their whole life learning and every time they think, okay, we got it, stuff to use, right around the district. So, so I think it's important that that's our focus as a school. But then there are the fiscal challenges of making sure that within the constraints of the budget, we're giving the best education possible. So that, I think, is a perennial challenge. I don't think there's a, that's not the biggest challenge. And then as a board. And then as a board, it's how to bring... School board meetings have been challenging to watch. There have been times I have just, I mean, I've watched them, but they have been at times painful. So re-establishing trust within the community, I think, is not going to be easy, but is a challenge that as a board you need to meet.
I can't really say I've been better than Emily just did. I think I agree with all her points, with the bottom line being safety of the kids and the quality of the education, and dealing with the outside forces that are seeking to undermine our public education. How much now we can do as a school board, because it's quite often policymaking at the state level, may not be much we can do. But I, I agree with everything she said.
Okay, any, any other, any other questions? Because I'd like to kind of wrap it up, and then...
Are you taking a motion?
Well, we're gonna take a motion to go into non-public, and then we'll discuss the candidates and come back and take a vote. So if you, if you're ready, I didn't take a motion to go into non-public, and L R C ninety-one A, Senate Code Three, paragraph two, for a personal decision.
So move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come back.
Thank you.
Charlie grabbed your chair.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. You're welcome.
Oh, no. We're good. Okay, yeah, we're good. Okay, obviously, that was a long deliberation on the board's part, which, and we really appreciate both of you being here tonight and, you know, taking the time. The, the board has voted at this point to appoint Tom as the rep for right now. The election is again in March, and, you know, there could be another candidate in March as well.
There are several states.
Yeah. So anyway, but I really appreciate both of you being here tonight. We are, we do have a school board training coming up. If you'd like to sit through it, you're more than welcome to do that and see what it's all about, and that may give you some insight in what's, what's coming down the future.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Jack, do you want a motion for, for approving?
Well, I guess we should, I guess we should really take a roll call vote.
I didn't ask you.
Barrett, you can tell, tell me right now.
You are, you are allowed to vote and take action in non-public session. However, we generally advise that if it's not something that is confidential, that you come out and reaffirm the vote in public session.
Okay. All right. So let's, then we'll reaffirm the vote in, in public session then.
Motion to that?
All right, motion to reaffirm, seconded by Brody.
I'll second.
Okay, so the, again, roll call vote for the school board appointment. Brody?
Aye.
Yeah, name, name the candidate, because we're reaffirming the vote.
I thought we were voting to reaffirm the previous vote, so I thought we voted yes.
Make the same motion that you made in non-public session, make it again, and go through the same motion.
Okay. We took, we took a vote, a roll call vote in non-public, so we should take a roll, should we?
Either way. You don't have to in public session, but if you want to, that's fine.
So I guess I would ask for a motion to reaffirm the appointment of Tom that was made in non-public.
I'll remove my second, so the original motion.
Okay.
Dr. Jim should remove his motion and then re-motion.
This is just confusing for, because we haven't done this before, but...
The motion is to reaffirm the vote.
The, the motion is to reaffirm the appointment of Tom Bigford that was made in non-public.
Oh, okay. I, so...
Okay, moved by Stephanie, seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, and I'm gonna take a roll call vote for this as well. Brody? It's just a yes or a no. All right. Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Jim, one side as well. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. That was a little confusing, because we just haven't done this very often, but anyway. So I would, now, should we adjourn the board meeting, because this is not, is this part of the board meeting?
Every board does a little bit differently. Some of them do it as part of, as part of the meeting.
Okay, you're, you're on, you're on the agenda as part of the meeting, so...
Yeah, so...
Barrett?
Okay. I don't need to kick anybody out of their seats, but...
Oh, yeah.
As for a few minutes...
Yes, thank you. Great for anybody that needs to... Congratulations on Barrett Christine of the National Association. Nice to meet you so much. Hi, Barrett Christine from the School Board Association.
Congratulations, Tom. Well, thank you very much. And thank you for being here. And I thought you might be interested, no, my wife is Katie McCarthy.
Oh, I'm okay. Yes, yes, I know.
I just wanted to thank you for interviewing. And congratulations.
Do right by you.
Now we're...
Yeah, I saw some good stuff. There's a whole bunch of... Good. Are you ready? Good.
So we're gonna spend the rest of our summer. Yeah. Our daughter starts modeling in two weeks, so...
I'm surprised that isn't still that I get it.
I think she's ready. I don't have it, it's on just Amazon every day.
That sounds right. Yeah, you need this stuff.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I just for you, but you texted me about it. It's only a dollar.
They'll be a little more lenient then.
Yeah. I asked him to... I asked him too about that draft. Oh, you're saying that. That doesn't make sense. That's what I thought. It's, he only thinks he was a ton of wolf pearl earlier. They said if he had to redo it, and I was telling him, he said, if I had to redo it, he said, I wouldn't have just made an agreement with a ton of wolf pearl, and then bedlam, they have to move that one.
Oh, no problem, no problem. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's just... Mary is in college, so she's going to school in Chicago. She, she's my oldest. She came, she was here until eighth grade. And then Marvell is working at Harvest. He's a junior, so, you know, my, my daughter Maya passed, so... This is why, yeah. No. No. Oh, no, 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 it's okay. Sixteen months. Yeah, she was a batter league from coming back to school, so... No, it's okay. Yeah, no, it doesn't get worse than this, so... Oh, my gosh. That was really unexpected. It's okay. No, it's not, but I'm getting there. Thank you. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, it's hard. She was medically fragile, and so... I just didn't realize, quite, how fragile. No, she's, that was hard. But still, it's hard. I should say it was hard. Yeah, and this is the way I could give back, but there are other ways I could give back. I might, I might. Yeah, we'll see.
Yes, was that good? All right, fantastic. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting me. I think I know a lot more people on this board than I, than I actually realize, so to those of you that I've met before, nice to see you again. To those that I have not met, Barrett Christine, the executive director and the School Board Association, I appreciate the invitation to come on up and just give a sort of a refresher on roles and responsibilities. The gentleman that you just appointed to the board, he seemed to get it, because somebody asked him if the board's primary role was a policy meeting, and I was like, yes. Fantastic. So do we have a time limit? I just, you know, I can do this in a half hour, I can do this in two hours, so just whatever. But my time is the board's time, by, by all means, so...
About an hour, fifteen, hour, twenty minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
Split in half, sorry.
I presume everybody has a copy of the handout that I provided. I like to do this low-tech, to be quite honest with you. You know, we do have a powerpoint that goes along with this, but I like having a conversation with the board when we're doing these sorts of trades. I think it's a lot more, it's better for me just to sort of sit and have a conversation, and hopefully to be beneficial for the board as well, too. So gonna be informal, we're gonna have a conversation. If there are questions, by all means, feel free to ask as we're going along. And please note, too, that this is, you know, this is not for the adult, the all roles and responsibilities. It's not in a bridge version by any means, but, you know, there are nuance and local traditions and local customs that are gonna impact any school district, and any school board across the state. So when we put this document together in sort of somewhat of its current form, you know, we're always tweaking and amending it, about seven or eight years ago, we went through and looked at statutes and the Department of Education rules, and said, what do they say about, about boardsmanship and school board governance? And so we broke those down into, I don't know, about seven or eight categories, seven or eight buckets, if you will, and we'll talk about those. But to begin, sort of two overarching processes that we're, that hopefully they're trying to convey. The difference between collective authority and individual authority, and the difference between governance and management. The school board governs the school district. The superintendent and her administrative team, they manage, they manage the school district. The way I sort of conceptualize that is, you know, governance is, we're the overarching view, right, the thirty thousand foot view of things, but management is what, day-to-day operations of a school district. Busing, students, staff, facilities, someone who's a parent, so on and so forth, so... But again, two, two, two primary aspects, individual authority versus collective authority, we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then the one aspect, and sort of the narrative on page two, that I want to, want to highlight, and right there in the middle in the bold italic language, the role of the school board is not to run the schools, but rather to see that the schools are run well. I think that, I think that sums up sort of board governance responsibilities pretty well. Moving on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump over, jump over to page three, and talk about sort of what the tangible role and responsibilities of those school boards are. And some of these are direct action that the board takes, and some of them are more, what's the word, more aspirational, if you will. The one I'd like to start off with in the middle of page three, under two A, provide an education to resident children. This is our C one D nine colon one dash A. It shall be the duty of the school board to provide at district expense, elementary and secondary education to all pupils who reside in the district until such time people have acquired a school diploma or have reached age twenty-one. And so how is this accomplished? Educational programming and resources, health and safety, extracurriculars, co-curriculars, family communication. But I'd like to point that out, when people say, well, what is the role of the school board? Your job is to provide an education, and you're not providing the direct educational services, but at the very least, I think that's a base to, a baseline for, you know, board contemplation when you've got questions before you. If you always ask yourself, how does this impact kids? What's in the best interest of kids? And how is this decision that we're gonna make, whether it's budgetary, policy, whatever it might be, how is going to impact kids? I think that ties directly to what the statute's calling for, and I think that that's just sort of a good way to conceptualize some of the tough challenges that the board may have to make from time to time. Getting to some of the more sort of nuanced, more direct action items that the board is responsible for. Second established schools for policy. For some of the newer members on the board, I hope you've seen your policy manual, it goes on there online, probably three and just that, isn't it? There may be too many, some boards probably have too many policies, some boards probably don't have enough policies. I don't, I don't know where that number is, but, you know, NHSBA has, between our policies that are required by law and policies that we categorize as recommended, there's probably close to two hundred, if not, if not more than that, about seventy policies required by both state and federal law, and then probably, say, another hundred, hundred and fifty or so that are categorized, quote-unquote, recommended. Why is policy so important? Why is it, you know, the first base of good school board governance? Well, it allows the board to direct and authorize employees, it establishes board processes and priorities, communicates expectations, provides information, and provides district-wide institutional stability. And who are your policies impact? You know, we think of, sometimes we think of the schools for, you know, the forewalls and the kids and the staff, but if you're to go through your policy, you have policies that probably impact everybody in the community, right? You have policies regulating staff, policies regulating students, you have policies regulating yourselves, right? You have board policy, section B. You have policies now that impact the community at large, visitors to school grounds, everybody will be have policy, processes, and protocols. Also, you know, community-wide, we've got policies about bringing forth your questions or concerns, or getting something on the agenda, policies about renting out the gymnasium to the boys' scout, or the church group, or whatever it might be, right? So you've got policies that impact, impact the community at large, not just, you know, people within, within the school, within the school building itself. The other reason, you know, policy's so important, when NHSBA gets a call from a superintendent or a board chair, either herself or, or, or a staff attorney, what do you think the first question we ask is? What your policy say, or do you have a policy on that? So in addition to the, you know, the importance of good school board policy, if we look at the Department of Education regulations, specifically the E three oh sixes, the minimum standards for public school approval, all the things that every school district in the state has to offer and provide and do in order to be approved by the Department of Education. All the things that every school district in the state has to offer and provide and do in order to be approved by the Department of Education, there's not a lot of talk about the school board in there, mostly it's about, you know, academics more, more or less. But in the section that does talk about the school board's responsibility under the minimum standards, it's all policy-based, and I've got some examples on, in the middle of page four. E D three oh six point oh four, um, paragraph A, so all the policies school boards have to have in place, there's probably twenty-six or so, just in that, in that section alone. And then there are other aspects, excuse me, throughout the min- the minimum standards, we're talking about the board shall have, um, a plan, I mean, essentially a policy, right? Or a policy, and there's a policy on that, and, um, you know, the, the minimum standards, the policy requirements, um, they range in everything, from attendance and absenteeism to bullying. To whether homework is going to be counted for credit or not, um, graduation required, graduation competencies, so on and so forth. To some degree, um, the policy work is where school boards still get to exercise some level of local control, right? A lot of the policy requirements within the minimum standards, and even some of the statutes will say, the board shall have a policy on X, but it doesn't, with some exceptions, thank you so much, Eric. Um, with some exceptions, it doesn't tell you what needs to be in the policy, so, um, here in, in, in government North Regional School District. The seven of you have the, have the opportunity to craft your policy as, as you see fit, to meet the needs of, of your community. Likewise, it's gonna be, that policy's gonna be different in Manchester, it's gonna be different in Goldmark, right? Um, the other aspect, too, um, more and more, um, the legislature is requiring school boards to have policies on this, that, or the other thing. Some recent ones, um, uh, youth sports, um, and, uh, your concussion policy now has to have an academic component to it, if the kid, the kid can't play football because he's got a concussion, he probably can't be reading a book or staring at a screen that long either, too, right? So, no, we have to have an educational component, manifest educational hardship, that statute changed a couple of years ago, um, you know, the bullying law hasn't changed, but that was significant about ten, ten years ago. But every more, there's usually another one that the legislature tells us that we have to do, um, you know, I say, when I started at, at N H S B A, um, seventeen years ago. I think there were about fifty policies that were required by both state and federal law, we're up to north of seventy now, so, um, but anyway, policy. And we've got some examples with, within the handout as well, too, and I presume without knowing that there's a, a policy system here, is there a policy committee, or they're vetted through the administration, or you've got, you've got a system in place, yeah. Every board does it a little bit differently, but, um, and I don't care what it is, but just so you have a policy to review them when we send them out, and we will be sending it, um, just, did everybody get the email we sent out yesterday with the public comment policy?
Yes.
Did you see that, okay, good, is that becoming law in another three weeks or so? Have you been getting emails from us? Okay. Yeah, sure, just wanted to make sure we had your, our system updated, sure.
So it requires thirty minutes, but if there's no, if there's nobody making, do you have to hold that thirty minutes, or can you?
Um, that was the subject of much, um, discussion at the legislature, um, nobody had an answer for that, and I just tried to assure, you know, House Education that. We'll take care of that, reasonable minds will prevail, so here's what I would recommend you do, and I haven't read your sample policy, and I know we'll just send that out yesterday, here's what I would recommend. Your meeting starts at six o'clock, there's nobody here, you start your meeting, fifteen minutes into the meeting, two people show up, pause the meeting, and just say, who do you want to speak? And give them their three minutes in, in the middle of the meeting. I mean, that's, that's the best that I can, you know, people run late, you know, it just, it happens, so. Um, the law isn't clear one way or the other, but I'm gonna advise our boards that, yes, if the meeting starts at six o'clock, and nobody's there, you do not have to wait the thirty minutes to do the public comment. If people show up, though, after the meeting's begun, find, find a way to accommodate them. Yep, any other questions while we're in it? On policy? All righty. I'm on page five now, um, second establish the school district budget and provide budget oversight, um, when I say set the budget, maybe that's not one hundred percent accurate. Excuse me. Um, the voters set the budget ultimately, don't they? Um, but that doesn't mean that, you know, the, the, the board doesn't have, you know, other obligations, and I would imagine that at every meeting, you're doing something fiscally related or budget-related. Manifest, for example, um, uh, you know, making, voting on, you know, to, you know, appropriate, appropriate money. Appropriate money for, you know, for this purpose, or for that purpose, um, uh, and do, do you have a budget committee here?
We, we have, we have a finance committee that meets.
Not, it's a municipal budget, you know what I mean, okay.
As a, there was, there was a drive for that a few years ago.
Yeah.
Um, being a part of the school district was very, very difficult, and we'll try to pull that together, we just, we, uh, feel these are different cap, so, um, that kind of fell apart.
Yeah.
So we, we have our internal budget committee, which is just the board.
Yeah.
Um, and the basically, the budget process is the administrators bring their requests, the superintendent, and our district administrator, they, they scrub it down, and then we have three nights of, uh, committee meeting. Uh, we do the public, to discuss.
Yeah.
Uh, the principals from each one of the buildings.
Yeah, answer questions from the public and presenter.
Required, obviously, for the very much of the presentation.
Right.
The vibe of the presentation.
Okay, all right, um, and, you know, just in, 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 you know, even though you get to, to march in your annual meeting, you're doing budget work all the time, and you've got a couple of examples, your budget preparation. Um, transfers of appropriations, you know, you get a lot of transfer money across the line items, you, you budgeted for, for ten snowstorms, buttered snow twenty times that year. You're budgeted for gas at the beginning, two seventy-five a gallon, and it's a little bit north of, a little bit north of that now. Um, or you have a, you know, a, a, a high, a high cost, you know, special needs student movement in the district, you may need to move the money around, but again, we all agree on policies on all this. Um, authorizing payments, uh, preparing the annual budget, and so on and so forth. Um, you know, the other interesting thing, too, is, you know, let's not lose sight of the fact that, um, that your budget is a policy statement, isn't it? It's a politis, it's a policy statement of what, what the seven of you are recommending to the voters, and what the voters are willing to, to approve. Um, you know, sometimes you have to make choices, are we gonna put out a new roof this year, or are we gonna do the ball field? Are we going to buy a new school bus, or do we, you know, we help fix the boiler, or whatever, whatever it might be. Um, all the more reason, this is sort of an aside, but one of the reasons, and we'll get to this a little bit later, because there's a provision in the handout, lots of strategic planning. Um, oh, and a lot of districts will have a C I P capital improvement plan, so they know, okay, this year we're doing the windows, next year we're doing the boiler, next year we're doing the roof, so on and so forth. And you've got a lot of buildings, right, you've got the middle school and high school, what is the town's, do they have their own?
They have their own.
Their little elementary school, right, so you've got, what, six or seven buildings on the?
Six elementary schools and.
And then the two here.
High school.
And then the back center, two, right, yeah, yeah, so that's a, that's, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of property that you have to, that you have to manage, so. Um, but anyway, um, uh, so, but, so, policy and, and budget, questions on, on, on budget at this time. And I imagine you're probably already working, probably already working on budget, aren't you, I mean, you'll be starting around Labor Day, and then going through the fall, but, I mean, I think Caroline is, is talking to, um, to her, to her other administrators, and building principals, and B A, and special editor right there, and, and everybody else, so. Questions? Page six, we just went through this, higher evaluate the superintendent, um, this is the one thing on the list that you wanna do as infrequently as possible, and, and, right? And I know you've been pretty lucky here in government, what, it's been, what, twenty-five years with only two superintendents, right, that's, that's unheard of these days, that's absolutely unheard of these days. Um, but I think it's a testament to, I mean, it's a testament to the board, it's a testament to the people in this community, um, you know, and, and you're hiring the right people, right? You're, you're hiring the right, you're hiring the right people, so, um, you know, you can imagine the challenges of a district that's cycling through a superintendent every two or three years, no continuity. You know, it hurts the staff, it hurts the, you know, it just, it, it's not good for the community when you're, when you're cycling through administrators every couple of years. Um, evaluation, um, as well, too, um, there is a requirement that the superintendent be evaluated every year, um, that's both in state law. Um, I haven't seen every superintendent's contract, but most contracts have a provision in there, and you probably have a policy, I know N H S B A has a sample policy that says the superintendent will be, will be evaluated every year. Um, do you have a, an evaluation process or system in place?
I don't think we really do.
Okay.
In all honesty, uh, probably because of where we've been, uh, with our superintendents, you know, we just, I don't think we ever thought that we needed.
The matter of law.
And, and, uh, so I think that's something that we really have to focus on, getting that process in place.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we fear Caroline, too.
Yeah.
You know, we, we expect her to be here at least ten years, so.
You should party then, do a ten-year contract. Um, yeah, uh, so, a couple of things, um, one, um, every board struggles with the evaluation system and processes. I can hand you a rubric, I got ten on file, that's not gonna help you do an evaluation, though. Um, I will say, though, we are doing a webinar, I don't think until October, um, the, the last Tuesday in October. Um, the consultant that does our superintendent searches, we're doing a webinar on establishing, uh, evaluate superintendent evaluation processes. Um, because every board struggles with their, every district is different, you know, it, you're, the evaluation, um, the evaluation of a, um. A, a, a first, a new, a first-time superintendent is going to be different than the evaluation of somebody that's been a superintendent for twenty years, right? First-year evaluation in a brand-new district is going to be different than if it's, you know, experienced superintendent, who, you know, maybe moves around a couple of jobs here and there, but, you know, and it just, it just, it is, it's just gonna be different every, every time. Um, uh, there's another point I was gonna, I was gonna say, but. Um, the other aspect, too, of the superintendent evaluation, since you don't necessarily have a process in place, um, now's a good time to do that with a new superintendent, obviously. Um, Caroline should be part of the conversation as to what the system or process is going to look like. I think that's, that, that has to be joint conversation, it's not fair to employee, just to walk in and say, this is, this is what we're evaluating, or this is the rule, that we're using. You have to, you have to make sure it reflects what you want her to do, right, we have to make sure it accurately reflects the, I'm just gonna say, really, um, accurately reflects the goals that you set for her. You know, what the expectations were, have you done all of that, and I presume that there was some entry plan, if you will.
Monday night.
Right.
Monday night.
Do this on a Monday night, gotcha, so that's gonna be the basis for your evaluation, at least in some part, though, right, bro.
What's, um, what's Mr. Dave, a lot of boards make with evaluations, what's something that we should try to avoid, that sounds like a good idea, but you're like?
Yeah, that, that, that's a, that's a good question, um, and, you know, I think. What's that?
Throwing darts.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think, um, a lot of boards struggle with finding the right tool to use, and because that gets frustrating. They end up almost doing a narrative, and it's not necessarily telling. Um, a lot of boards, too, use sort of an old-school rating sheet, you know, one, you know, one below average, two average, three, you know, above average. That's only good so far as if you know, well, if you have the criteria for what is excellent, and what is average, and what is below average. And the other challenge, too, would be, you got a, not a big board, but let's take a nine-number score, or eleven-number score. If you give Caroline, you know, a, a, a three, and, and Stephanie gives her a one, like, like, there's a disconnect there, right? You know, and, and that's often what I, I think is not, sort of not fleshed out enough. You know, I don't, is it like the Olympics, and you're gonna throw out the high score and the low score, so it's, right, for the gymnastics, like, you get like more of a regular score. Um, I think the other aspect, too, is, um, the boards do not do the sit-down goal-setting with the superintendent at the beginning of the school year. Um, so, it's not always clear what the evaluation is going to be based on, then. Um, those are, those are just a couple of the things, a couple of the things that I see, which is why the goal-setting at the front end is, is imperative. So, you know, so Caroline gets instructions from the board, right, and everybody ends on the same page, so when you get to the evaluation time. Um, another problem, too, challenge that I see, is a lot of boards will wait to do the formal eval until, like, the spring, until, like, May. We generally recommend that, especially with a new superintendent, and the reality is, you know, Caroline's being evaluated every single day, it's being new, and every board meeting and whatnot. Um, but, you know, I recommend doing, like, two or three sort of mini evaluations, if you will. The same way that we benchmark, when we have strategic planning, we benchmark six months out, twelve months out, twenty-four months out, with the goal setting, you know, so check in, have a, have a, 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 a mini evaluation. Say, the middle of October, right, and just do it in a non-public session, it doesn't need to be formal, but Caroline can hear the goals that we talked about. Where are we on them, what support do you need from us, are you meeting them, if not, why, did a pandemic hit? Did, you know, something, you know, did, 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 did the school catch on fire, and we needed to pivot, or whatever, whatever it might be. Any other questions?
I have a question. Um, I was interested in how much of the role that Middleton would play in that evaluation process.
Um, you're, 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 they contract, you're an employee of S A U forty-nine, right? You're not, they're not part of this S A U, right? I would say none, I mean, if they have a concern or a complaint, if Middleton were to call me and ask me that, and they had a concern or, or complaint, I would say, call, call the board chair. Call the, call the government board chair, and have a conversation, or if, if the concerns are with all five of the Middleton school board members, maybe you gotta spend a one-hour session between the two boards. But they're, 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 they contract for services the same way you contract with any other country, you know?
Yeah, no, that's fair, it's just one thing.
Yeah, 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 do you have a question, Stephanie?
I did, so relative to, um, the goal-setting process, so, like, I know teachers as part of their professional field, that they have to submit a professional field that includes roles. Um, do superintendents have to do that as well?
As a, as a matter of law, no, it's probably not the worst idea. What's that?
I'm going to do that. Entry plan, letting I talk all about this.
Yeah.
I, I just, I did not, I do administrators now?
Yes, yes, yes.
You do?
Against the rules that they set.
Yes.
Okay, I, I only know the teacher, and I don't know the.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions about superintendent, yeah, Charlie?
You're going to, um, have you already posted the link for the vote?
Yeah, it's at our website, I've been emailing that out, I think that email's gone out two or three times, but every Monday, we send out a reminder for all our webinars and trains.
I just saw one, like, just.
Yeah, it came out on Monday, I believe.
Is, is the, um, evaluation process typically, if you said it's typically acted out non-public, but is it ever presented in public?
Um, no, I mean, I've, I haven't seen it presented in public, the same way any other teacher evaluation is going to be. Maybe it's a different, you know, the superintendent's perception, but, um, you know, it, it's gonna end up in, in a personnel file, so it's, it's not gonna be for public consumption. Other questions? Policy, budget, higher, evaluate the superintendent, um, and we've got, uh, on page seven, sort of the evaluation cycle, I apologize if that didn't print off very clearly, but. General sense from that. Um, moving on, conduct hearings and serve as an adjudicative body. Has this board had occasion to have that whole hearing, either a teacher nonrenewal, or a student discipline, or suspending a student, or anything like that? You've had several, several of them, all right, so, um, I, I have to ask that, because, I mean, you can imagine some of the small districts where we go, and, and, you know, K five is gonna have a lot of stupid, stupid discipline problems. Yeah, 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 I hope not, anyway, um, at least the ones that can't be resolved. Um, and, you know, the smaller they are, just they're not, you know, they're not, they're not doing the, you know, nonrenewables, and often things of that nature, so. Um, gonna talk a little bit about sort of the, 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 the con, um, conduct, conduct, conducting the hearings, observing, as the ju- Um, gonna talk a little bit about sort of the, 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 the con, um, conduct, conducting the hearings, serving as an adjudicative body. And then also, um, tie into that some real roles and responsibilities and governance-type aspects of, 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 you know, of, of identifying sort of the management versus governance piece. Um, so first of all, um, as everybody probably knows, the, you know, various laws give teachers and students particular rights, um, you know, under everything, under the United States Constitution and major state law. They're entitled to a hearing before the board. So for teachers, that's gonna be, if they're, uh, a non-provational teacher, a tenured teacher, for lack of a better way of putting it, if they're, if you wanna not renew their contract, they're entitled to a hearing before the board, to a mini trial, if you will. Um, a dismissal, where you want them out of the building immediately, you're not even waiting to move them to school year, because they did something very egregious. Again, entitled to a hearing, um, your collective bargaining agreement may have, um, may have, I presume there's a provision where grievances start at the building level, come up to the superintendent, and then go to the school board. Conversely, um, students are also entitled to hearings under the law. If you're gonna suspend a kid for more than ten days, he's entitled to a hearing. Um, uh, there may be bullying investigations, the kid may be entitled to a hearing. Um, residency issues, early admission to first grade, curriculum issues, sexual harassment policies, so on and so forth. Manifest educational hardship is a good one as well, too. Um, so in those hearings, um, the board is serving as judge and jury, essentially. Um, and it, it, and to some degree, it looks like a trial, you're gonna have the, the, the superintendent and her lawyer sitting over here, almost, or serving as the prosecution, if you will. You're gonna have the teacher or the kid sitting over here, almost as the defendant, if you will. And then the superintendent and the principal are basically making their case before the second of you, the judge and jury. And it's, you know, it's modified due process, but it's due process, they have a right to know the allegations against them, they have a right to call witnesses, they have a right to have a, a, an attorney or another, you know, any other consultant there, advisor, um, uh, uh, you know, they can exchange and call witnesses, present documents and evidence, so on and so forth, and the board has to distill, distill that and make a decision. Um, one of the challenges, and, and social media is, is, is causes to be a significant problem as well, too. Um, you know, because you're in, you know, a relatively small community, and you're on the board, and everybody in town knows who you are, you can't go to, go to shots, right, without somebody coming up and asking you about what's going on, that the, why did this happen, why did that happen, why did that, why did that happen? Um, especially with the, 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 especially with the, anything that's leading to a hearing. You have to be very mindful of what information you get and receive outside of the boardroom. And that doesn't mean you have to, you know, sequester yourself and, and, and keep off of social media, and turn off the news, and not, not pick up the phone. Um, but you just have to be mindful that, you know, if it's something significant, the parents are gonna line up. Why are the cops there? Why was the ambulance at the high school? What's happened to that kid? Um, you know, the, and I, it's, it's, social media, you know, because the reality is, it's gonna be posted on whatever, Snapchat, Facebook, and Instagram, before you even hear about it, that's just the reality of it. The kids are gonna be taking pictures of the incident, is it the fight, the whatever, that, you know, the kid that got arrested for selling drugs at school, they're gonna take the picture and post it. You have to be mindful not to sort of do your own investigating. Don't call the parents, don't comment on social media, don't, you know, ask around what really happened. It's sort of, you know, you, the board will be given the information, and it's frustrating, because the, the, the public expects you to have all the answers, to know every single thing that goes on in every classroom, and every single day. Um, but the information that you need, you will get at the proper time. It's the best way I can put it, and there'll be lawyers involved, there always are, somebody's gotta make a buck off of, somebody's dragging me, so, um, uh, you know, but, um, you know, you'll get the information that you need at the, at the appropriate time, I understand that can be frustrating. You know, if there's gonna be an investigation, it's either gonna be the superintendent, the principal, or an outside third party, depending on the nature of the allegation, and, and who's involved. They'll do their, they'll do their, their investigation, and you will get, you know, the, the information at the appropriate time for you to make, to make a decision. Um, I'm aware of at least two instances across the state where, um, the school board got too involved, at, like, going around town, asking questions, emailing parents, you know, kind of doing their, what, what really had to, kind of doing their own investigation. Where they had to, the one board, um, basically, they, they, they'd all spoiled themselves. You know, they couldn't serve impartially, because they were in the background doing all this unnecessary kind of stuff. Um, so the attorney that was representing the district had to run around town and follow, like, a couple of former school board members, a couple of attorneys in town, a former teacher, you know, some of you, you know, some people that at least had a sense of, you know, what's going on in the, in the school context, but what a pain, right? You can imagine what, how, what, how difficult that was, so, um, you know, anyway, the, so, my point being with that is, you know they have a right to a hearing, the board, you gotta sort of, you know, stay as disconnected as, as, as possible from it. Um, you know, most of these are gonna be a non-public session anyway, so that's a fallback for the board. Um, you know, the teacher, they, they, the, the accused has a right to have the hearing in a public session if they want, and sometimes the teacher will do that if it was a popular teacher that you're letting go, they'll want the hearing in public session, so they can, you know, get all the teacher allies and former kids, and I've, I've been to one of those where they had to, their room wasn't big enough, they had to set up AV in the, um, the gymnasium, because there were, there were so many people that, that shut up, so. Um, but anyways, be mindful of, of, of your role, um, and, and that extends, you know, not just the hearing itself, but to some degree, a lot of the things that may go on any given day within, within the school district, um, even if it's not rising to the level of, of, of a hearing. You know, that something happened in, in the school that day, and, you know, I, I don't know what happened, I, the administrators are the ones that sort of did it, and that type of stuff, so. Questions about that? Comments, thoughts?
Caroline, I think, I think we've had a very, a good set of communications on that level. We, uh, I really, really emphasize that when, when something happens, generally, the board will get a note from the superintendent or from the board, a great, great charge at that point.
Yeah.
Uh, to let us know what's happened, right? Uh, and then if it's appropriate, to send out a, you know, notice to parents, or that, that, that's kind of the follow-up.
Yeah.
But I think in our experience, that very communication is very open for us.
Right.
To know what's happening upfront.
Yeah, you can't get some information, absolutely, you don't need any gritty details, but, you know, the ambulance was at school today because a student got hit in the head, you know, during gym class, or there was a fight at the, in the cafeteria, something along those lines. You don't need to know who was involved, you don't need to know who broke it up, you don't need to know the kid's name, you don't need to know who, who the witnesses were, you don't need to know, you know, it, but information so you're aware of that something happened. Stephanie, did you have your hand up?
Well, I'm just, I'm, as a, I have children in the district, and, you know, I have a lot of parents in town that feel very comfortable talking to me, and that's wonderful, and, you know, there, when things come up that are potentially involving, you know, discipline and things like that, um, I, is my role to not listen at that point?
That, 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 that's the tough aspect, right? On one hand, you have to be respond, responsive to your constituents.
Right.
But on the other hand, you have to be mindful of that, you know, as an elected member of this body, you have certain confidentiality, confidentiality standards that you're, that you're obligated by laws to uphold, right? Um, you know, when, when you take your oath, you're basically saying that will, you know, abide by all the laws governing school boards, and there are privacy and confidentiality laws, so. I mean, you know, without getting sort of into the specifics, it's kind of hard for me to answer, without knowing the basis of the conversation. I mean, if they're calling you as, you know, part friend, part of the school board member, to let you know, you know, issues about the school itself, I think that's fine, as, as an elected official. You know, if they call you and say, you know, Johnny Smith in the math class is bullying my kid, or being mean to my kid, to some degree, as a board member, you don't have any authority to do anything about that, you don't have any authority to supervise or oversee Johnny, and tell him to stop doing it, that's an administrative function. Um, you know, you know, if they're, are they, are they gossiping? I mean, and I, I say that facetiously, please understand, I'm not, you know, I mean, good.
Uh, there was one situation that involved a weapon on the kids, and the parent came to me because their child was on the weapon that was pulled on.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, that's, you know, it, 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 it's tough, you know, on one hand.
I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, 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 I mean, you know, on one hand, you know, you got elected because you know the parents, and you know the community members, and you're active at the, the Little League, and the soccer, and the hockey, and the, right, and, you know, and that's, right, that's why, that's why you ran for school board, and why you got elected, because you know the teachers, and you know the kids, and you know the parents. Um, you know, I mean, eh, not, I, I, I can't give a blanket answer, you know? I mean, you know, if it's, you know, if it was a friend of yours, yeah, I understand why they, why they were given that, had a, you know, traumatic experience for, for their child. I mean, in, in, in that situation, you know, if they're talking about that's, that specific instance, I'd say, let them say their piece, you know, and then say thank you, um, you know? If they're talking about, you know, let's say, safety protocols in response to this incident, I think you can listen to them, and then you say, you know, would you mind putting that in an email to the board chair, the superintendent, or do you wanna call the superintendent, maybe have a conversation with your thoughts about safety protocols? So, part of it depends on the nature of the conversation.
That's actually what I ended up doing, is encouraging the board.
Perfect.
To share with the board.
Yeah, perfect.
No, I, I appreciate that, because I think that there are, particularly, as a member of the board with children.
Yeah.
I, you know, and people do trust me to come and talk to me about things, it's something that I wanna be really mindful of, um, in terms of where and stop conversations. Um, particularly, like, if they get elevated to the point where.
Yeah.
There could be, um, some due process involved.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, you feel it out, I'm sure whatever you do will ultimately be fine in the, in, in the end. Um, you know, I just wanna, some boards I have to be a little more, um, forceful with how I give that part of the presentation, because I know that, you know, I, I, I know that the, you know, the board member is calling everybody they know because something happened, and, you know, and it, it just, you gotta, you gotta back off just, just, just a little bit, so, you know? Or, you know, I also know the, the, you know, the board member who, you know, at the, it's the simple example, the, the, the cop car was at the, or the ambulance was at the, at the high school, or whatnot. You know, I've seen people, I've, I've seen a board member, you know, post actively, oh, call me if you have any information about this, if you wanna talk about it. I think that's, that's, you know, so, anyway. Any other questions about that? Alrighty, um, moving on, still on page eight, another, uh, prime role responsibility, collective bargaining. Um, what do you, tell me, unions here, two, one, two, you have three?
We have three, three unions, we got one collective bargaining company.
That was an attribute of any bargaining this year, who's that for you?
The teachers.
The teachers, how does it usually go here?
Um, we've had a, a, a very good relationship with the, uh, the teachers' unions.
Yeah.
You know, I think, and I think the, the current leadership team, um, we get along very well with, right at this point. Not to say that I think the negotiations this year are going to be difficult, you, uh, coming off of, or maybe, uh, coming, coming off of, two contracts that we had with, by the time it was last year, the support staff and administrators. I, I tend to think it's gonna be a difficult conversation.
Yeah. But are they gonna ask for hazard patents?
Uh, but I, I think, uh, every, every conversation that we've had in the past, uh, sometimes you've had to go to mediation, if you have to.
Ten times.
Um, I don't know if it's gonna get to that point this year, and, hey, you know, I'm hoping it doesn't, just because of the relationship we built through the whole process.
Yeah.
Um, with the current leadership, so, um, I think they're very understanding, um, but we're all, I'm also a realist when we talk about negotiations, that, um, there's always a give and take.
Right.
And at the end of the day, uh, I mean, we're gonna see, if, if nobody's happy at the end of the.
Then, then, then it's a fair deal, right, exactly.
So.
Have they tested you out yet?
No.
And then, yeah, that's not, it's not by accident, you know? I've heard that from a couple of other first-time superintendents, so first, the first one, so.
Um, we'll see, you know, we'll see afterwards, but I, I'm, I'm encouraged, I think, that, yeah.
Good, good, okay. Um, I'm hearing there's some nationwide trends, too, I haven't seen it so much here in the country, I'm a little surprised that it's gonna start happening. Um, where, um, a lot of the initial, um, proposals are going to be, um, less fiscal monetary related, and more like safety protocols, and things of that nature, so. Don't be surprised if they come in asking for whatever it might be, so.
I think that's, that's one of the administrations have with this particular team, we've had a great M U with the whole process.
Good.
Um, you know, we as a, you know, resources committee.
Yeah.
And then really worked out to make sure everyone was happy with the, you know, the whole process, not necessarily the people in the audience.
Right, yeah, right. That's, that's a different, but that's a different issue, yeah. Do you use consult, or do you tend to do it yourselves?
Um, we've, this was, that, we pretty much did it ourselves, you know, we really have a hand to get into that, and again, I think, um, you know, reasonable minds, sitting in a room talking about things, getting things accomplished, and I think that's really what we've been, what's our process.
Good.
So, I'm, I'm hoping that, that continues.
Yeah. Questions about bargaining? Alrighty. Um, moving on, G, communicate with the public, keep the public informed of board actions, and, you know, when we say that, it, it, more so, more could be, more than just, you know, posting the notice, and posting the minutes, and the open meetings, and the right-to-know law type of stuff. Um, you know, one of the, you know, when, when we used to do our new school board member orientation in person, in Concord, before we started doing everything via webinar, we'd get a hundred, a hundred-twenty people in our conference space, um, all new school board members, randomly, on the board month. And I'd look out and ask, just, I'd randomly call on people, say, why do you want to fit a school board, why do you want to fit a school board? You know, eighty percent, seventy-five percent of the people, it was kids, right, they got kids, and then I could tell that, because they were all thirty-five years old, right? That's why they didn't work for the school board, they got kids in the district. The second most common reason that people would give though, if they wanted either more or better communication from their school board. Now, I don't know, I don't wanna quantify that, okay, more communication, we send out one newsletter a month, so now we're gonna do two, more communication, is that, is that appeasing you? Better communication, you know, that, you know, I don't, you know, that's, that's subjective, so I don't know how to answer that per se either. Um, but what I will tell you is, you know, it's easier now than it ever has been in the history of the world to communicate with people. Right, how many do you, the first thing that you do in the morning is grab your phone? Everybody, right? And how do you think parents are communicating these days? We're not sending flyers home to get backpack anymore, are we? Right, it's all digital, right, it's, it's either email, or an app, or, uh, you know, I presume that they still could do, do the robo-calls for snow days and stuff like that, 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 right? Excuse me. Um, you know, and certainly, I mean, this was obviously very issue-specific, but, you know, when, when we had, um, uh, you know, when COVID, when COVID did hit, and the governor signed the emergency order allowing for the virtual, virtual meetings, you know, how many people do you get in a typical school board meeting? Which is, here's an average school board meeting in the middle of, we get one, two, just say two people every time, right? Right, you're asking about the employees, wanting to go through the manifest. Um, but how many people would you get on when, when we were doing the meetings via Zoom? Hundreds, right? And obviously, again, that was very issue-specific, because parents wanted to know about masking, or in-person versus remote, or hybrid, or, you know, uh, you know, or, it's gonna be able to sit at lunch together, it could be able to get outside and get some fresh air without the mask for a little while. Um, but anyway, just, I, I use that as an example of, you know, and, and we hear a lot of stuff in, in Concord about informing parents, and notice about this, and notice about that, and whatnot, and then, and then. informing parents and notice about this and notice about that and whatnot, and that's all well and good. But so anyway, to the extent that you can provide more notice and information, do you do social media here? Do you, you do? So, you know, the, the basic stuff, all right, about the school play and the musical and, uh, you know, I mean, parents like seeing pictures of their kids online, you know, and the art show and whatever it is, so, you know, do you use?
Some, some schools and the art center, yes.
The, the problem, the problem with so, the social media aspect is it's, it, it, it's time, somebody's got to manage it, right? It's either the secretary or, you know, you, you, you can't spend your whole day approving what's going to be posted on the, you know, on, 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 on schools or social media. You know, you have tollboards, you know, we have a policy about that, you know, and some boards are right ahead and start a social media and a Twitter page and a Facebook page and whatever else and like an Instagram. Slow down because, you know, the superintendent is real nervous when they, because it's, it's somebody, it's somebody's time that they don't necessarily have. Excuse me.
Okay, I, I, I post our agendas and what meeting is coming up on our town's Facebook page.
Yeah.
That's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so people know about it again.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, and you just do that on your own, you just take, yeah, no, that, yeah, that's absolutely fine, that's absolutely fine. Questions? All right, the last one for school boards and I'm going to sort of segue, um, into doing some compare and contrast with the superintendent's role and responsibility. Um, so the last one's for teacher planning, long and short term goals, planning objectives. There's actually, actually a law, there's an Department of Education rule. That says school board shall develop long range plans and identify measurable and attainable short term objectives. Some boards do this via strategic planning, you know, I can make the argument that, you know, your budget and your policy sat- satisfy this requirement, I can make that argument if I need to. You know, I mean, do you, does the board, let me ask you, does the board do sort of yearly goal setting for itself for, for the districts? You know, just to, you might want, I mean, it's just something to consider, I mean, I know it's more meetings and more time, but. Yeah, a, a lot of boards will tend to do that in the summer, you know, after the fourth, there's a lot of people who are on retreat on a Saturday or whatever and, you know, order pizza or whatnot, um, and, and trying to hammer on some goals, you know, for the upcoming school year. It's not the worst idea, um, especially with the new superintendent, you know, just to kind of get that ball rolling now, um. And again, inertia can kind of sort of take over from time to time, but. Question, that's it for board stuff, I mean.
Just, just real, just real quick, go back to the, with the previous, yeah, the, the, what we decided to do, and I don't know what, how you feel about this. We focused all on that, you want any requests?
Yeah, that's fine.
And it stopped. In requesting that.
Right. Another good way to get them to stop is to put on, um, a point five FTE in your budget for next year. And when people ask why you're adding another point five employee, you say, because we got eight hundred right to know law requests and, and, and the central office needs an extra set of hands to manage that.
One of, one of the things that we do is what we posted on the website, yeah, we, you know, who sent in, when it came in, when the, it was mailed.
And the response.
From you, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that really has slowed down.
And you talked about the assessment component, also very close to how many hours, you know, one of them is four, thirty hours.
That, that, that's the other thing, I think if you're, if you're getting voluminous right to know law requests, whoever in the central office is handling it, to have, make sure they track their hours the same way that the terming would. And so you can, so you can go to your, if you put that point five FTE, and, and you can justify it because the superintendent, the assistant spent three hundred hours this past year dealing with a lot of right to know law requests, so. Questions about the board stuff? All right. Am I boring you? I'm going to jump a couple pages, the pages nine, um, nine to ten.
Probably everybody here has a safe thinking eye that there's no page numbers.
Oh, really? I'm, I'm sorry. Is there a page? Mine, mine has page numbers, I thought I printed it from the same document that.
They're, they're referenced on the first page.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's no, there's, is there a footer on there, I think that's the orientation two thousand and two?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies for that, I don't, I don't know if my copy does. The copy I printed, I thought was the same one I emailed Caroline, so.
Strategic planning is on page nine.
Yeah, sorry about that. I know I've been referring to them all, all evening, my apologies. All right, so I'm on, I'm, I'm jumping over to the bottom of page ten, basically starting on page nine, which is the superintendent's role.
No, I have a good question.
Yeah?
Why did you jump over Roman numeral three to the front?
Um, just more for time, more than anything else, figure, I can, I can certainly discuss that, I thought, just in the interest of time, I was going to skip over that, but I can, I can go through it with Sharon.
I'm, I'm a new board member and I've read all this several times.
Yeah. I presume you can read it on your own, Rodney?
Yes, and you flattered me actually, and you went by it.
All righty, uh, yeah, that, that was, that was the only reason why, just, um, in the interest of time. Superintendent's role.
It's on this page, right, the Roman numeral four?
No, that's, um, this is, I have, it's, it's, um, Roman numeral four.
Oh, I remember, it's at the bottom.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of that page. And actually, I'm, I'm jumping over to page eleven, where the bold of that is, where A, implement school board policy. Got it, all right. So we talked about the board's role and for the government's responsibilities, um, policy, budget, you know, sort of overseeing the district from sort of a thirty thousand foot view. And talking about the superintendent's role and responsibilities, just as there are statutes in the Department of Education rules that speak to the school board's roles and responsibilities, there's an equal number of statutes in the Department of Education rules to talk about. The superintendent's role and responsibility. And I better look at some of the magic language here, but A, implement policy, but simplistically, the board adopt policy, set policy, superintendent implement policy. It's as simple as that. But when we look at, and, and that's not just sort of a, 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 that practice is actually in law. Again, going back to the Department of Education rules, just as we talked about, there's a rule, the government's, the board of school boards, and it talks about all policy, this policy, that policy, this policy, that. The corresponding rules for the Department of, uh, for roles and responsibilities of superintendent is, for example, three oh two point oh two A, nominate all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with state laws and the state board, and then the magic language and local school board policies. Jumping on to the third bold point, be responsible for developing and recommending the school board, um, to the S A U, the annual budget, dot, 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 magic language, in accordance with school board policy. Now, you know, the rest of them, we haven't, we haven't underlined there. That's not by accident, by any means, you know, it is, is the way it was designed. And if we jump back, keep a thumb on that page. And jump back to the, the policy requirements, it'd be the fourth page, I believe, E, N H D O E rule three zero three, doing the school boards. So I'm going to read one from the school board. Three oh three point oh one A, school board shall adopt policies necessary, desirable, to control and effectuate recruitment, employment, evaluation, dismissal of teachers, other employees. So you have to have employment related policies, right? If you jump back to the sup- excuse me, to the superintendent's roles and responsibilities, three oh two point oh two A, nominate certified staff and appoint other employees, those related to, to employee issues within the district, in accordance with local school board policy, you see how they connect? It's not by accident, the board has to adopt employment related policies and the superintendent implements those employment related policies. That, you don't have to flip back to, to page four again, but, um, one of the roles and responsibilities of, of school boards is to adopt policies necessary, desirable, to control and effectuate the purchase of equipment, supplies or services. We're talking about purchasing things, your budget, right, budget related policies. When you jump back to the school board, starting with superintendent roles and responsibilities, in three oh two point oh two, D and E, be responsible for recommending the budget, and D, in accordance with local school board policy, and E, be responsible for developing and making an accounting system and financial reporting, in accordance with local school board policy. So they, 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 they relate on purpose, is, is the point I'm trying to make. You know, there's that cross section, that crossover about telling what the board policies has to do and then laying out those responsibilities for the superintendent and the other administrative, and the other administrators on, on, on her team. So I think I, I got that through, are there any questions on, on that aspect? Um, supervise, nominate and evaluate staff, I think we talked a little bit about this to some degree with the, the teacher, the, the, the teacher discipline issue. Is everybody familiar with how the, the, I presume the, the season board members are, how the nomination process goes? The superintendent has to make a recommendation that we hire Rowley to be the math teacher and the board then acts on that recommendation. Superintendent nominates the board, language in the statute is old, isn't it lax? But basically the board has to authorize that. Without that nomination from the superintendent, that person cannot be hired. And I've seen that happen before where the board wanted Sally, for whatever reason, and the superintendent said, I'm not nominating Sally, I'm, I nominated Joe, and they were, I don't know how it got resolved, but there was a standoff between the board and the, and the superintendent. And may I ask you this, this is for my own curiosity, um, what about non, and this, I'm sorry, this only applies to certified staff, right? What about your non-certified staff? By policy, does it give the superintendent authority to hire non-certified staff?
In, in the past, we've, uh, generally denied, sort of, they, they've got to be going towards some sort of certification.
Oh, okay. I'm talking about like your food service workers, things like that, the.
Yes, yeah.
Every board is different, what about coaches? Does the board authorize coaches or A D and superintendent? Yeah, um, every board is a little bit different, like, the smaller the school, in my experience, the smaller the school, the more the board is involved in at least signing off on those, you know, the custodians and the food service workers and the aides and whatnot. Coaches is always an issue, added coaches is always, is always an issue. Some, some boards want to be involved in hiring the softball coach and other boards don't, so.
I think we've always taken the position that, uh, again, that's a, a day to day operational.
Yeah.
Process, and what doesn't need to be involved with that, again, less, uh, particularly in personal retention.
Yeah.
Some people that are, there's an issue, you know, that, you know.
Good, good. So supervise, nominate and evaluate staff. Uh, we got, the, the next page, we've got the appropriate, um, Department of Education rules and statutes listed there. Renewal professional staff, superintendent shall nominate all certified staff. The superintendent three oh two point oh two, the superintendent shall direct and supervise all employees of the district. And then the statute, superintendent responsible for recruitment, supervision and evaluation. Getting into sort of the real, the, the nitty gritty and the meat of the superintendent's roles and responsibilities, I've listed here, R S A one ninety-four, C four. And this is, this is a statute that lists everything that the superintendent is supposed to do. I'm going to just read through a couple of them, but as I read through them, I mean, just think about what I said before that, you know, the superintendent's in charge of the day to day stuff that goes on within the district. These are sort of the day to day responsibilities. Payroll, cash flow, bills, supervision and evaluation of staff, um, development, review and evaluation of curriculum, compliance with laws, regulations regarding special education, title nine, there are basically all your federal laws. People achievement, um, ongoing assessment of district needs, um, writing, disbursement, being all state, federal and state level requirements. School board operations and the relationship between the board and the district administration. And J, the daily administration and provision of educational services to students at the school facility, including whatnot. Limited to fiscal fair, staff, student safety, building issues, so on and so forth. I won't go through the rest of them, um, but, I mean, again, those are sort of the day to day, right? Those are the management aspects, making sure that the bills get paid, making sure that the buses are lined, making sure that the facilities are, are in safe and working order. And the other related aspect to that, doesn't mean that the board doesn't have a role in any of this stuff. But, and while it may not be a square fit on all, everything was through this statute, you probably have policies that speak quite a bit to, 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 to what some of these things are, you know. You may not have a policy on payroll and cash flow, but you probably got internal, internal procedures to make sure that's being done appropriately. Recruitment, supervision and evaluation of staff, you know, you may have, some boards have policies, um, you know, i- if, if not a written policy, more maybe an informal where we want, we want people who have a master's degree, for example, or we want people, we want hired people ideally, you know, who have experience, just, you know, just throwing out some examples there. We certainly have policies on special education, title nine, disability, minimum standards, student records. I know we've got policies on, on that. You know, ongoing assessment of district needs, that's kind of where we get back to the strategic planning that we talked, talked about a few minutes ago. You know, daily administration, administrative staffing, pupil transportation, and we have budgets on that, so. You know, this, to sort of get to somewhat of a, of a, of a wrapping up, um, you know, none of these things stand alone, um, you know, when people get territorial, um, like, there can be problems with that, whether or not that's coming from the board or whether or not that's coming from the administration. You know, another good thing, if you look at the, the next page, there's a sort of chart, not really a chart, but the, I mean, whatever columns that I have here, I stole that from my, my good friend in Idaho. It's a, it's a general guide, I think it, I think it helps sort of clarify, you know, whose responsibility is what, um, you know, and, you know, with the new superintendent, you know, just, it's a matter of having conversations and building relationships and getting used to, to, you know, everybody's style. You know, Caroline's going to have a different style than, than Kathy and Kathy had a different style than Jack Robertson, right? So, um, but. Questions, comments about this or anything else, anything we talked about tonight? Anything else that may be on your mind?
Thank you for directing us.
Yeah, my pleasure, happy to do this. We do this dozens and dozens of times in the years. I, I gotta tell you, I, it's my favorite part of the job, with all due respect, really going downtown every day in Concord. It's not always my favorite part of the job, but.
Really? I would think legislative year.
Yes, yes. But, uh, uh, anyway, no, I, I, I love the training, the training's always been my favorite part of the job. It's easy for me to sit in my office and sort of put out what I think is a good idea, but the reality is when I get to come up to the schools and, and see the people that I'm trying to serve and have a conversation with them, it's, it just, it, it, it makes my job a lot easier. It makes my job a lot easier, so. Are there any questions, last, I think you need anything else from us? Just give me just sort of another minute, um, check the emails, we have a lot of webinars coming up in the fall. Actually, we have a couple coming up, we're doing one next week, actually. We're doing it to legislative, um, uh, summary, um, we'll do that next week. I wanted to push that out, but our director of governmental relations has to take one kid to college in Virginia on Monday and then she has to take the other kid to college in Chicago on like Thursdays. And she's flying down, she's flying down to Richmond, flying back and with her daughter, and the next day she's flying her son out to Chicago. Yeah. So, um, and then we're doing, um.
Fly, stick with you, that's okay.
But, yeah, right, that's what she said, she bought, directs, it's like hoping that that may. I was at a conference last week, two weeks ago, um, in Charleston, South Carolina, and, um, a couple people I know at the conference said to spend the night in Dallas for a fourth airport, just, just. Question, yeah?
Question about the trainings, um, they're often, they're often offered in the middle of the day?
We record them, we can get, we can get the recording.
That was a question I had, either can you offer them later or can we get?
We, can, we, we struggle with that, with what is the right time to do it? There's never, when's the, when's the best time for a meeting, right? Never, right, like I, my boss said. So, yeah, we, we, we try to alternate, some of them, we try and do some at like six thirty, six o'clock, but then we do some during the day. Just, but, you know, I, you know, during the day is an ideal for people that have to work and. during the day is an ideal for people that have to work and it's six, six thirty, at night is another night that you're trying to get to the ball game and feed the kids dinner and all that sort of stuff too. We do record them, um, I probably will forget, but, you know, the day of, you could send me or our, um, office manager the day, offer the day after the, uh, the webinar, we can get, we can send you the recording. Yeah.
Oh, it's not automatically sent out to the registrants or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know what, I think we do. No, I don't think we send out the recording. I think we send out the materials afterwards.
Okay, good.
Let me look into that. The other, the other thing that we're looking at doing is, um, excuse me, I don't know why I'm so burpy today. Um, um, uh, we're looking at, um, uh, like, having them pass or protect them or archive on our website as well too. We're not there yet, but I know we, the people, people that do our website, we've had a, been taking an initial conversation with them. So, we're gonna try and start archiving them as well too. Yeah, it does make sense, so, yeah. Sir?
Eric, we're talking, we're hearing Jack talk about how good to do association company. What do you think?
Oh, the, the, uh, coalition, uh, consortium of state school board associations. Um, I'm hopeful. We're in the infancy, you know, um, I, I don't even know if they've, if they've incorporated. I don't even think they've incorporated yet. So, um, we're, we're looking at providing a lot of the same services that the old organization did, but without the political bend that got them in trouble.
I, I looked at the website.
It's, it's gonna be, yeah. Yeah, I've, I've had a couple others on the call. So, I met with some of the executive directors from some of the states that were joining that association, um, when I was in Charleston. Um, we had a Zoom yesterday, two days ago, maybe Tuesday. Um, so, we're still, we're still in the infancy of, you know, developing bylaws and a constitution and things of that nature. Um, some executive directors are, want to run full speed ahead to get this moving. Others are saying, "Let's kind of slow down a little bit," but I'm, I'm hoping, I'm, 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 I'm hopeful that, I mean, NSBA was so filled with politics, just, you know, and poor, poor ma, fiscal management. Past presidents event of the National School Board Association get free travel to any NSBA event with their spouse for life. So, if you were, yeah, if you were president twenty-five years ago, oh, what do you know? There's a conference in San Diego next month. You can make a phone call and they'll fly you out, put you up in the hotel. Oh, look, they're, they're gonna be in Orlando. Let's, 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 let's go on down and see if the grandkids. Yeah, I mean, just galas, you know, and gowns, and a lot of that was, you know, the corporate sponsors paid for that. But, I mean, I'm talking six figures to host a dinner for, for freaking school board, rest of it, yeah. And we're not doing any of that. We're not doing any of that, so.
I see you have a question.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. We got to do a way to put it, so, I hope so. But, yeah, we'll be, um, we'll be discussing that, you know, more, sort of more information comes out in the association, the new association kind of, kind of get to rolling. So, I think, I think it's gonna be, um. Any other questions for me? Alright, last thing, um, webinar's coming up, look for the emails. Um, I think we're doing about two a month between now and Thanksgiving or so, and I got a couple more in the pipeline and topless and consultants to see if we can get to a couple other ones booked. Um, uh, thank you for indulging me this evening, I, I appreciate the invitation to come up. Um, and more than anything, thank you for continuing to be members of N H S B A. It's through your membership that we're able to come out and have an attorney on staff and to create the policies and the trainings and the webinars. So, um, we greatly appreciate it, um, and I, I thank you, Eric.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. At that, at this point, I think.
Yeah, same.
Okay, move by Dr. J, sectioned by Brody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.